We'll go call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to the Brunswick County Board of Education for July 2021. We're going to start out with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge led by Mr. Benton. Please stand.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth and in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are at public address. Mr. Green?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, I believe we have three speakers tonight. Policy number 2310 governs. The speakers and the content, I'd give you a portion of it, that says that presentations will be limited to three minutes per person or three minutes per organization. We have three speakers, so that's no problem. And then the chairman. Discussions regarding particular individual employees, litigation, student records, or other matters which may be required to be kept confidential may not be discussed in an open forum setting. Chairman will have the responsibility to determine matters of discussion that may be inappropriate and could rule the speaker out of order if necessary. So I think the first speaker is Joan Hall?
That's me.
You ready?
I'm ready.
All right.
Okay. Would you hand this out to everybody in the board, please?
Daniel, sir. I keep in time, or you keep in time?
It was actually what is found in mass from the University of Florida Studies.
Okay.
Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Joan Hall. In the North Carolina Board of Education is the North Carolina Board of Education is trying to teach two plus two equals five. How can we trust them that our children wearing masks in schools will keep them from getting sick? Think about young children with masks. They drop them on the ground, they put them in their pockets, they put them in their school bags and lunch bags. Just think about all the bacteria in those masks. If parents don't want their children to wear masks, they should be able to opt out. Also, why are we letting 11-year-olds get vaccinated without parents' consent? Aren't these the same children that are eating laundry pods? This is only the third time I've attended a board meeting. At my first meeting, I asked a teacher if CRT was part of the social studies standards. She assured me it was not. Then I find out James Ford wrote the program. Then I followed Catherine Truitt, and she said, "No CRT." Now I find the board put out a glossary with CRT still in there. And what about this Jamie Falkenberry? Has ethics complained against him because his wife is a lobbyist for not one, but two companies selling CRT programs to the state? How can the citizens of Brunswick County trust the state on CRT or mask? I told you at the first meeting, my family is biracial. I do not want to see my granddaughter's in classrooms that are segregated by race or by wearing masks. The First District Court of Appeals ruled that mask mandates are unconstitutional. There are two mask studies that you need to look at. And one of them you have in front of you. That one is done by the University of Florida. A third of the masks contained more strains of bacteria causing meningitis. One-third were contaminated with dangerous antibiotic-resistant bacteria, and the third had pathogens that caused fever, ulcers, and acne, yeast infections, and strep throats. The German Federal Environmental Office study, they measured the baseline carbon dioxide level in masks and unmasked children. There is a concern wearing masks causes, I'm trying this word, hypercapnia. This is, in turn, leads to impairments like decision-making and weight problems. Parents, grandparents, teachers, board, let's not put this in our schools. Please, take it out. Let's protect our children. You need to be brave. Don't surrender. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas Russell?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Benton.
I'm Tom Russell. I live in Bolivia. I want to thank you for taking a crucial step last month to keep our youth from being indoctrinated in the movement called Critical Race Theory. But I fear this movement, which would completely and negatively transform our country, is not over. I know that many of you do not sign up for this fight, which is central to the very soul of our nation, but here we all are. I pray that you will meet this challenge. I'm sure that you already feel a lot of pressure from all sides, but I also recognize that in the final analysis, you'll do what is right for our youth, our teachers, and our nation. The federal government and big tech companies will be throwing a lot of free money your way to implement this hateful and decisive destructive ideals into the minds of both our educators and our youth. Resisting that monetary windfall will be difficult. You will need to be forever vigilant, as the terms have already changed and will continue to do so, as observed in terms like active civics, cultural responsive teaching. All these terms are created to confuse the uninformed, but they're all from the same political playbook. Don't make the same mistake of those before you who blindly accepted Common Core and lost our educational independence forever. If our youth are led to believe that race is the lens through which all issues are examined, whether history, math, or science, then their aspirations for greatness will be stifled. Why would they strive to achieve their very best only to end up at the same spot as everyone else, as taught under equally best-based learning principles? Critical race theory will create racial violence and divide our children. Our educational system should bring our youth together over shared American values, not tear them apart. In Loudoun County, Virginia, a Chinese woman who lived under the brutal Communist Chinese regime of Mao Zedong addressed the school board and strongly objected its championing of critical race theory. She stated, and I quote, "This is indeed the American version of Chinese Cultural Revolution." During the Cultural Revolution, I witnessed students and teachers turn against each other. We changed school names to be politically correct. We were taught to denounce our heritage. Red Guards destroyed anything that was not Communist, old statues, books, and anything else." Close quote. Doesn't this sound familiar to the direction America is heading today? America's future is in our hands. It should not be in the hands of a group of elites, permanent governing class, or power-grabbing ideologues. To define America for the 21st century and to turn it into Communist China is up to us, the average, common, and regular American citizens, those right here in Brunswick County. We are the people whose task it is to preserve America's freedoms for future generations. Two days ago, on the Fourth of July, some Americans celebrated the signing of our Declaration of Independence, which launched the greatest experiment in self-governance the world has ever known. This historical document was founded on the belief that all of us were created equal. Our founders, with great courage and sacrifice, defeated the greatest military power at the time to obtain our freedom. Yet John Adams wrote to John Taylor on December 17th, 1814, when he stated, "Remember, democracy never lasts long. It soon wastes, exhausts, and murders itself." There never was a democracy yet that did not commit suicide. I pray that we are all up to this challenge to preserve those freedoms that were obtained at so high a cost. It is our duty now and forever to defend and protect that freedom just as it was acquired and preserved for us to enjoy today. Thank you.
I'm Heather Marshall. I am a Brunswick County resident, taxpayer, and most importantly, I'm a mother. I am commenting today on the transgender athlete policy. In 1964, Congress passed a law that women could not be discriminated against in sports. We are going backwards 70 years by allowing biological males to play on biological female teams, allowing a male to take a position on a team that a weaker biological female would take if the biological male had not tried out. When transgender athletes compete against women, women's sports are no longer women's sports. They become unisex athletic events. This is about preserving women's sports. This is about making sure that we recognize that biology does matter and that there's fairness to our competitors who have worked and trained hard. Allowing males who identify as females to compete in girl's sports destroys fair competition and erases women's athletic prospects. Due to testosterone levels, men naturally have more muscle than women, allowing them to compete at an increased level. During infancy, males have 75 to 40 nanograms of testosterone. Females only have 20 to 80. During adolescence and especially puberty, males can gain up to 1,200 nanograms, whereas the height of testosterone in females is only about 75 to 80. Men also, on average, have less body fat, larger lungs, a larger heart, longer legs, narrow hips, and a higher VO2 max, which basically measures oxygen during exercise. A male's average VO2 max is 42 milliliters per kilogram per minute, where a female's is only 33. Males have more hemoglobin, which is the protein in the red blood cells that carry oxygen to the body's tissues. A male's average is 13 to 19 grams, where a female's is only 12 to 15. All of these differences combined are the reason why men and women's sports are usually separated. These comparisons explain why competitive sports have separated biological males from biological females, and also why legal measures like the Title IX in the United States require institutions to set aside and protect separate and equal funding facilities and opportunities for women. In school, we teach our kids basic biology. XX chromosomes are female and XY are male. This is a simple fact. Biological factors have a huge effect on athletic performance, so regardless of how our child feels, they are either a biological male or a biological female. Our children have to wear masks because of science, but we are ignoring basic biological science here. My last question for board members that are supporting this bill is who are you serving? Because it's definitely not our children. Thank you.
Happy Tuesday, everyone. I figured a good spotlight this month, we just closed out the first three weeks or so of summer school last month, and wanted to give you just a little sneak peek of some of the kids, some of the staff inside, and spotlight them. Here we go. So a moment of silence, please. We have one of our middle school students seen here in the science lab, and there have been some very interesting and definitely engaging activities going on at our summer learning sites. North Carolina Public Schools Department of Public Instruction even giving us a little shout-out for the great hands-on learning. These photos, this is just a couple photos. We've got plenty of photos on Twitter and on our Facebook accounts, but we wanted to also give them a public shout-out, a few of them, while we're here at the board meeting. Another science lab, this in the elementary level, and you see a couple kids engaged and working with one another. This looks like some kind of filtering exercise, but this one, if you look close up, the eyes, they don't lie, and even though she's wearing a mask, you can see it written all on her face that she is truly enjoying what they're taking part in right there. Another one, this one, just a larger snapshot of some of the things going on inside our summer learning sites. This one I found, I've selected this one to show you guys just because it speaks a little bit. You've got a student heading in to summer school, and back here, it's a little, it's under the shade, but you've got a couple educators waiting, arms open, to welcome everybody in, and that's just what defines the BCS family, from students to parents to our educators and staff inside the school, community members as well. Another shot from inside our schools. We've got smiling faces again, with our staff helping out to make sure that this summer learning program is a success for all the kids. This little fellow in another photo you'll find on the larger selection of photos is all smiles. Here, it tickles me because you've got, "Smile, smile, smile," it's like a little side-eye action going on, but cute nonetheless. And then finally, something we're doing this summer, just to let everybody know about some of the things going on inside the school district, is behind the summer scene, so to speak. So if you go to our district website, www.vcswan.net, under District News, right there on the main page, you'll see this, Summer Scene. You click on that, it'll give you June highlights. If there's any survey results that have been done, you'll find them there. And we're going to do the same thing in July. In the summertime, we'll do the same thing in August before we kick things off. So there's a lot of, I call it by the numbers. If you go there, you'll see some of the stats from inside the schools, high school stats, some of the things going on with the staff, and it will be updated again in July. And if anyone needs, we do have a tutorial. Sometimes websites are, can be a little overwhelming to some, or we have a tutorial on the Facebook page. You go, just watch it, and we walk you through all the steps, all the places you can find helpful information. And that is your July Spotlight, guys.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, David.
Ladies and gentlemen, the board, you have your meeting agenda. Any corrections to the agenda?
I'd like to strike Action 5, and I'm going to bring that as a policy first reading for the next board meeting, if we could, to the next committee meetings.
New committee structure?
Correct. I'm going to just go ahead and alter that policy, and I'll bring it for first reading in the committee meeting, so that a second reading will fall on major board game, if we could, sorry.
Mr. Lemond, I'd add in a discussion, the conversation about masks for next school year. Make that discussion number, make that discussion number one, we'll discuss the next board meeting as the second item.
Motion to approve? We have a motion to approve with the changes, removing number five on action and adding masks to discussion by Mr. Benton. Mr. Barger, second. All in favor, say aye. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, you have minutes from the regular meeting on June 8th, and then the committee meetings on June 28th. Any corrections? Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Barger makes a motion, Mr. Robinson seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Ladies and gentlemen, you have consent items that we discussed at committee. A motion to approve. Mr. Benton makes a motion, Mr. Barger second. All in favor, say aye. Action items, Ms. Rutledge. South Brunswick High School baseball field renovations.
Yes. This item is what we discussed in committee. It was where we had not received the bids for repair of this baseball field. We have received bids now, and so I'm going to further explain the project. The baseball field at South has poor drainage, makes the field difficult to mow and maintain. This causes postponements and scheduling issues for our school and other schools as well. A request for bid was advertised on the website on June 14th for installation of a subsurface drainage system to resolve the issues associated with poor drainage. An explanation of the drainage system was two issues. One, the field is, the outfield's almost completely flat, so we don't have good surface drainage. And the second thing is the groundwater level there is between 18 and 24 inches, depending on where you are on the outfield, and we know that because the consulting engineer did geological testing to determine that. So the system to address the problem is doing two things. One, we're re-sloping the outfield to a 1% slope, which will take the drainage, you know, just naturally sheet drain off the field way better than it does now. The other thing is, is we're putting in subsurface sock drains. What I mean, it's a pipe that's covered with filter fabric. We've got six 4-inch pipes which drains to some 6-inch of the same, and then to two large 8-inch pipes, which then are going to carry water to the wooded area behind the baseball field. In addition to that, to handle the sheet flow outside of the field to play, past the fence, so we'll have a new fence, we're going to have to regrade all of that, we're going to cut some swales and ditches to direct that water. So the maintenance of this system will be to keep our ditches cleaned out, and the under drains, they'll have cleanouts where we can jet those drains, we can keep that cleaned out. Five bids were received on June 29th. Carmichael Construction was the low bidder at $314,728. The consulting engineers reviewed the bids and recommends approval of the contract to Carmichael Construction. So staff recommends the board approve the contract with Carmichael, which would allow renovations to be done during the summer and the field be ready to play by spring.
Sue, this is not just a patch job. You are regrading the whole field in the surrounding area too.
Right. The biggest problem is, is the water table. And so these drains are at, the underground drains are at a level that is slightly below that. So we're draining water that's there all the time, whether it's raining or not, away from the field. And then we're also taking drainage from the field, you know, what's going down to those drains, but we're taking water off the top by regrading, regrading the top. So, yeah, we did this on the football field there in one corner where we had a problem. If you're standing at the baseball field, you're looking at the football field, and you made four quadrants. The lower left quadrant had the same issue. We did that, and that fixed that problem.
So you talk about maintaining the ditches. We have other ditches we're maintaining already. This is not a new service, correct?
That's right.
And doing out there today, myself and Mr. Barger, along with you and other staff, you know, like you said, the success of maintaining any work that we're going to do will be maintained and keeping those ditches. As a part of the scope of this project, it is going to be to go in, clean the ditches, get them open to accommodate any drainage that we will have once these repairs are made.
That's correct. And I heard what the board said at the committee meeting, and, you know, we went back and talked about what improvements we can make process-wise, just on fields where we have grass, not only at the high schools, but the middle schools, to, you know, to, it's pretty good grass, as long as everything's draining, but where we do have good drainage, the grass is good. But I think we can do a little better, and I think that's just not a lot of money, but some process improvements.
Want to approve this contract?
Second. We have a motion to approve $314, $14,000 by Mr. Barger, a second by Mr. Robinson. I do want to comment that we did receive a letter from the principal at South Brunswick urging the board to switch from this work to a turf field. Obviously, the board has leaned toward your recommendation, but I want to make a comment in relation to athletic facilities. North Brunswick High School and West Brunswick High School have been in existence 50 years, as of today. Neither one of them can play a home tennis match because of the lack of facilities we have in this county. I'll be the first to admit I have urged the board to consider turf as the exemplary way to fix this field. Obviously, there's no support for that. I think we've missed a grand opportunity. So with that said, all in favor, the motion, say aye.
Mr. Lemon, can I make one more comment?
Sure.
Real quickly. I too like the idea of a turf field, and my position on that at this point would be to make that in a long-range plan, possibly. Currently, with the amount of money that it would take to go with a turf field, considering it would also have to include other fields and potentially accommodate other schools, with the curriculum issues that we currently have in the schools and the other funding that we're going to potentially have to provide right now, I just can't see myself, you know, investigating or spending that kind of money. I do agree with Ed that it's something in the future that we may have to address, and I will support doing that, but I do that in a long-range plan and looking at outside funding sources in doing so. Tax dollars, you know, as a taxpayer myself, I just can't come to spending that kind of money yet until we can identify some sources.
Mr. Lemond, it's a unique opportunity for you to bring up tennis courts, because I don't believe we're talking about tennis courts here. And we've had emails going back and forth about fixing the tennis courts with bond money. I don't think anywhere in this contract is saying we're not going to fix tennis courts. Secondly, I believe this board needs to be more concerned about keeping water off the top of our students' heads while they're learning, with our roof repairs that need to be made, than put turf on a baseball field. It's not being physically responsible to go with the turf field right now. Mr. Robinson, I did walk that today, and that outfield's like a golf course. And I suspect that Sue and her staff and the contractor are going to put it back in an even better shape than it sits currently. Many Major League Baseball stadiums have natural grass in them, but not all turf. We need to provide adequate and nice facilities for our students, but we can't remember, folks, we're on the Board of Education, not the Board of Athletics, and we have got to improve the education of our students in this county. And that is where my priority lies.
Anybody else want to comment?
The difference in turf cost versus this is, what's the number in that? 1.7?
Roughly, I mean, close to a billion dollars.
You told us 1.5 last week.
Well, it's, you know, I'm not the woman I used to be, but it's a lot. You know, it's, this is 300,000, and I believe the sheet I had in front of me is 1.3, and I- I kind of bumped it up because everything's more expensive right now.
So, it's still a million dollar difference essentially from turf to grass?
Yes.
Which was the same difference in the football fields and the work you want to do there. So, we have the same exact scenario that we had when we did the football field, except that board had more guts than this board and took the step they needed to take. But with that being said, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Next item is Ms. Quinlan. Social, emotional learning.
So, this is actually our school mental health initiative plan that we were proposing, and I think it's important for us to note that our emphasis of this plan is school mental health. I know that there is a lot of terminology that is utilized interchangeably, particularly among many public disciplines, so I think it's important for us to note at this time that in Brunswick County schools, we're focusing on school mental health. We are really trying to make sure that we incorporate resources and we utilize strategies that allow children accessibility to school. We recognize in our district that we do have high levels of poverty, with poverty become lots of different factors that impede children's ability to access school. We also recognize that coming from a pandemic and multiple hurricanes and loss, that children are experiencing lots of trauma. They may come from abuse, they may come from neglect, they may be coming from another country and lost everything that they know, and they may come and speak a completely different language. So, I think for our purposes, I want to emphasize that our goal is to support students and their mental health so they can access school. And with that, within our plan, we are required to create a plan. Within our plan, we do incorporate instructional strategies for basically teaching children how to be good people. How do you get along with your friends? Do you have friends? If you don't have friends, how do we make friends? Do you know how to get materials if you don't have it? If you're feeling sad, is there an adult you can talk to? Does somebody help you with your homework at home? I think that in Brunswick County, the most important way that I can emphasize this is we have a more universal conservative approach to supporting children access school, and our plan really is about school. And with that being said, what kinds of questions now asked?
Okay, so, we want to let the community know that you and I, Mr. Benton, met last week for a couple of hours about social and emotional learning. So, we wanted to emphasize that what's happening nationally and maybe in other parts of the state doesn't necessarily mean it's happening in Brunswick County. So, and there are positives about it, like finding out if there is a suicide risk, or if there's abuse at home, or if someone's hungry. I mean, we're all, we all want to know that. But with what you've presented to us, and Mr. Benton and I looked through every module, every book, every sample lesson, Dr. Oates provided us some as well, what we see in Brunswick County is not what we're seeing nationally or in other parts of the state. You did reiterate that there is no data collection on the kids and no national database that the data is going into. The only thing that we ask in Brunswick County is 20 questions. Do you feel safe at home? Do you feel safe at school? Do you have someone that helps you with your homework? We saw the questions, we reviewed them, they're not invasive, they're not threatening.
I'm going to try to pull it up real quick.
Okay, Mr. Barker said he would pull it up. So, we've looked at all the stuff that you've presented to us, and, you know, we know it's been passed by the legislature, you know, and, but we wanted to just reemphasize that no gender identity, gender teaching topics, no racial topics, religious teaching, none of that is within the teaching, and that when the teachers are trained, that's not there.
So, within our scope of practice, we help children access school.
Right.
And when there are topics that are beyond school, then we do have community resources and family resources, and we do help make those referrals. There are situations and topics that occur in schools that are maybe beyond the scope of a school employee, even a school counselor or a school-based behavior specialist, and when we have situations that we're able to recognize that extend beyond our scope, then our goal is to work with the families to be able to access services that maybe would be more appropriate to cover those topics that align with their family values. Our goal in Brunswick County schools is to be able to serve every child and do that in the best way possible so each child has that opportunity to be a good person. But we also recognize that our goal is to serve families, and we want to make sure that we provide them with resources as well.
Also, the harmony, you know, they move the goalposts all the time. We use this in the elementary school. We looked at that, Mr. Barker looked at it. What we currently have is, you know, I know you vet a lot of things. I know you vet everything. So, I wanted you to speak to that, how you vet the resources.
So, we find that it's very important that we keep a good handle on those resources that are provided to our staff that are utilizing those resources, and we do monitor that, and we do provide them with that support. We do monitor lesson planning, we do monitor those things that they can use, we do review them and provide them. We think it's important to give our teaching staff, and our teaching staff, being our student services staff as well, whether it's our counselors, our social workers, our behavior specialists, just like our math teachers, just like our reading teachers, just like our science and social studies. Teaching behavior is the very same way that we teach math, reading, science, social studies, and all of those other curricular areas, and so it is our responsibility as a district to also make sure that we monitor and support and align those things that align with our values and how we do business in Brunswick County schools. And that's not to say that there are situations that don't arise, that need our investigation and require us to provide some action. We will never say that there might not be something that we have to investigate and provide support to, but what we do is on the front end, provide that support for our staff so they have good resources that support those basic tenets of character education, which is what we align.
Well, and I, you know, critical race theory was an issue a couple of months ago, or it's been ongoing. No one on this board is for that. I mean, we're not to divide or to make, create division. Dr. Oates was a history teacher. He doesn't want things that aren't factual taught. He's very, you know, aware of that piece of it, and we know that this would fall under the policy of 77-20, you know, that you're not, as a staff member, allowed to teach your personal feelings to a student, and we just want to make sure that our community knows that for Brunswick County. And we don't want to go against things that are taught in the home. We can't, we can't teach and parent in the school what parents are allowed to teach at home, so we don't, we want to make that known to our community, because we are the gatekeepers to our kids.
And we are.
And we've looked at, I mean, Mr. Benton and I have looked at numerous books and things that you've supplied us, and we appreciate you vetting, and when you do the teacher training, we appreciate that as well, that, you know, that's very specific, that, you know, both sides need to be taught, but you can't, you know, inject your own feelings on a child. And we just, you know, don't want that to be the persona that what's happening nationally is what's happening in our county.
We do respect our families, and we do know that our families are our partners. I mean, we know that whatever values they instill upon their children, that is their choice. Our goal is to make sure that children can come to school and be safe, fed, loved, cared for, and learn, because we ultimately want them to have good long-term outcomes. We're in the business of schools, and that's where we keep our procedures within that scope of how do we access school.
Mr. Benton?
I'm very happy with what we went over. I mean, we went through every page of everything there was, all these websites. We really went down the rabbit hole looking at everything, and I was very impressed with your staff. You know, when you look for an item, you say, "I'm looking for something on fixing how a child feels sad," or "to teach them how to express their feelings appropriately," and they went and looked for that item. We didn't adopt whole curriculums from places, we didn't take every, you know, whole chunks just to make life easy. They selected one item or one lesson plan of what they were looking for, and that's the way we need to do it, and I think you guys did a great job with putting that together. And I'd like to make a motion to accept the social, emotional, or the mental health plan as presented to the board, and if we need to do enough, if any of the materials get updated, we'd like to have that re-presented at that time.
And be able to revisit it any time.
Yeah, I think we made that clear. If there are any changes or any surprises, it will go before this board first.
Yeah, not much for surprises.
And I believe you said you would use the harmony that we have right now, because the new harmony, you know, they move the goalposts constantly. They haven't unpacked everything yet. We don't know what's coming.
And we find that the curriculum in general across the board, they're always moving the goalposts, and we have to stay on top of it. That's our responsibility, but we do stick to those more conservative, universal items, and we do work with our staff and train them and how to utilize them and what the expectation is for our district. And I reiterate, if there is a concern or a family has a concern, please bring that to district leadership, and please bring that to us so we can support that. We want to support children, and our goal is to support families as well.
And I just believe as a parent, you need to be talking to your kids about what's happening at school, and you should have that open dialogue, you know, as a parent, because that's, I mean, I know you do that with your girls, I do that with mine. What's going on inside the classroom, that's key, because we, you can't just sit back and not be engaged with your kids. So, but I appreciate the time. You spend a lot of time presenting, supplying us with materials, so, and I appreciate your time sitting down as well, Mr. Benton, doing that.
I second Mr. Benton's motion. Mr. Benton made a motion to approve. Mr. Robinson seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Critical staff incentives, Mr. Ross.
Good evening, board. I just bring it back to you again, the recommendations regarding the critical staff incentives. We currently have a plan in place where special education teachers, our math teachers, and CTE construction teachers are eligible for a $5,000 incentive for newly hired teachers. Staff has made a recommendation that we approve a clarification that would allow current staff who have not taught in a critical needs area in the past year with Brunswick County schools, if they were fully licensed and eligible for moving into one of those critical staff positions, that they would be eligible for the $5,000 incentive. That recommendation is still on the table, and then we also, there was a request from the board, what it would cost for us to include a $1,000 retention incentive for current staff in these positions. We calculated that estimated cost at $148,557, and we had made the recommendation that we wait until the state passes their budget before making a final decision in regards to implementation of that incentive. And I stand before you to try to answer any questions that you may have.
We've been rehearsing the same thing for, what, this is the third meeting now?
Yep.
Anybody have any issues with the way it's written now?
I would support the second point, but that's, you know, the top one helps five people, six people change job titles. The bottom one thanks our staff who have been grinding in some of these difficult filled positions with us for a long time, and I just feel like we should reward all of our staff, not just those who are swapping job titles over. I just think that's fair for, you know, these folks who are really, you know, these ECP people really put their hearts in, they're doing homework 504s, IEP plans at home. I mean, this is tough, and same thing with math. I mean, we have math teachers pulling students out of their lunches and working with them and tutoring and putting time in with these students, and I think we should be rewarding them. I mean, I think that's a very tiny price. We spend more than that just running training days, so I'm in support of the second over the first.
I would agree with that.
Any other discussion?
I'm going to recommend both.
You're going to recommend both?
Yeah, that's what we recommend, to allow the internal candidates who are filling higher art staff positions or critical staff, critical needs areas, that if they haven't taught in those areas, they're currently in a different area that may be less difficult to attract candidates.
Will they be eligible for both parts or only the one until they're five, until the two years?
No, you would only get the one.
The one, okay. I guess, suppose I could live with that.
I'm motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. Mr. Barker, Mr. Moller, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, the next item, you've received resumes for the vacancy we had at BCC. Ms. Ellen Nelligan and Mr. Kwan Stewart. Do we, both of them are very good resumes and qualified people. Any comments on that? This position is pretty vital to the Board of Education in that we have a lot of relationships with BCC and getting ready to build our colleagues over there soon. So, the four representatives we have, we have Mr. Frank Isler, Mr. Bud Thorson, Mr. Les Tubbs, and then we have this opening.
I will make a comment on that. I was only aware of this brought to the attention of the Board of the Open at the committee meeting just over a week ago, and it was only advertised on our website. Not everybody polices and monitors our website, and with that said, I think it needs to be put out so more people can be aware that this is open and we can get some more applications to consider.
I have no problem pushing it off until the next board meeting, if we would like to do that. I mean, I don't think it's a pressing issue. I mean, both candidates were good, that expressed interest, and, but I have no feeling one way or the other.
I do have a question. With, I don't, we don't have a policy, I'm not aware of as far as advertising, but in addition to that, is it possible for a Brunswick County school's employee to serve in that capacity?
No, the policy says no.
One of those candidates that you named is a Brunswick County school's employee.
And like I said, I just wanted to get out to other people so they could have the opportunity to participate, and if it means putting it in the newspaper, putting it wherever, just the website is not good enough in my opinion.
Was the posting, did the posting say that employees can't?
I doubt if it said that.
I didn't see that.
Well, that sounds to me like the posting was in there, so we need to repost it.
Everybody agreed, just repost it?
Yeah.
And put it out in additional sources as well. I think that's a good idea.
Now, we need to fill the vacancy in a couple of weeks, so can we do this at committee?
Yes, because we haven't passed any policy. We haven't, we don't have a policy in place to prevent us from passing it during committee yet, so, so we could, we could have a first reading and still have the old policy in place until we pass the second reading.
I was our candidate, a person who, Dr. Williams, left July 1st.
I would be fine with doing that committee.
Yeah, I would be okay with that. I would still like it before it be a public board meeting, but if it's the will of the board to do it in committee, that's fine. Yeah, I want people to have equal opportunity to participate.
It says we don't have precedent for that. Is it from local papers and the website, or what are your?
I would definitely, Brunswick, state, Port Pilot, possibly the chamber, whatever methods that we have used in the past, but we got to get it out better than just the website.
Mr. Siemens, would you check that policy? I'm pretty sure it says employees can't do that.
Okay.
It's mentioned the posting says that. Just make sure the posting says that so employees aren't putting in thinking that they can't.
Okay.
Thank you. Next item is COVID vaccinations, Dr. Oates?
At our last committee meeting, the Board directed me to contact Brunswick County Health Services, contacted David Stanley and expressed to him the wish of the Board to explore the use of our facilities for them to coordinate and oversee possible vaccines for students. In talking with Mr. Stanley and also Chris Harrelson and some of the other staff, I expressed to them that this would solely be a health services endeavor. This is not something that we would provide transportation for. They would be in charge of securing parental consent. We simply would be offering the facilities as a place to do this. And this is the proposed schedule that some of the health services staff came up with, the five locations as you can see there, and also the dates of those vaccinations. As I communicated to you via email, I did say that we would not move forward on any further communication with health services until I heard the wishes of the Board. And if this is something that you wish to proceed with, we can do that and if not, then we can stop it here. I just need to know in which direction the Board would like for us to go.
This was after I stepped off. So just so I am caught up here and understanding completely on this, we are going to just give facilities as we would any other time with flu vaccines or any other time. We are just giving them facilities. The children are not in our care. Mr. Green's already said we have no liability on this.
That's correct.
Because it is completely Health Department and school will not have started by the 18th.
That is correct.
So we have no effect on our operations other than giving them a building, having somebody be there to clean up afterwards.
Correct.
Okay.
We're simply just providing the shelter, it's no different than when they were giving them in the college parking lot.
Correct.
I believe to go ahead with the proposed schedule of location masks presented.
I was opposed to it, but, I mean, I know it's not, it's not during school, it has nothing to do with school, it's just a site, but that was just my personal feeling. I know that, and you may not agree, but I just didn't feel like we should offer vaccinations to the kids, but.
We're not offering them.
Right, but, yeah.
This is all the Health Department.
It's for anybody who wants to come, it's not just the students, right? It's an open vaccination clinic, just like they did Odell, basically, right?
My direction was for student vaccine.
Okay. If they open it up to anybody who wants to go.
If they want to open it up, that is totally something that they would do.
I'm fine with giving them our facilities, no different than Odell. I just am not going to make a choice for a parent or, and I don't want them under our care getting them.
And we're not forcing anybody to vaccinate.
No. I have, I'll second Mr. Robinson's.
Any other discussion? Mr. Benton makes a motion that we make. Mr. Robinson makes a motion, we provide facilities for vaccine. Mr. Benton, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Next item is discussion, mask.
Yeah, I just wanted to get an update from Dr. Oates on the discussions about masks for next school year. I know many of us on the board here have discussed it one-on-one. Ms. Mopet and I discussed it today about, you know, not having the masks be mandatory next school year and just giving the option. If somebody wants to send their student to school with a mask on, they can, but we're not going to make our students wear masks. So can you just update us on where you're at in that process?
One, if you've been following the legislation, you know, the Senate bill that was, I think was free to smile, it died on the floor. That was to allow, give Boards of Education the authority to make that decision locally. I don't know where the General Assembly is with that bill as it stands to date, but as your superintendent and who's one that is to give you a recommendation, my recommendation for this particular issue would be for parents to make that decision. If parents wish to have their children come to school with masks, they can be, they can allow them to come to school with masks, but at the same time, we also have, and Ms. Rutledge, correct me if I'm wrong, we should have a large stockpile of masks remaining in the event that we need to furnish them. So we can provide masks for students if parents wish to do so. But if parents are not wanting their child to come to school with a mask, my recommendation will simply be for them to do so without penalty of any sort.
Can we discuss the summer school currently in?
Currently in, we are still under the Governor's authority.
COVID toolkit, we're still under the toolkit. And that's what we don't know about next year, is we don't have any authority to make any decisions ourselves currently on this because it passed the Senate, died at the House, the House gutted it, rewrote it, passed it. Now they're in committee meeting, conference committee right now and there's some sticking points, so we don't know where that's going to go. It's ultimately going to come down to whether the General Assembly passes something or if the Governor's going to allow something different. Unfortunately, we just don't, we don't have control over this right now.
Well, we're not continuously passing the buck. I think it's important for the community to understand that we are supporting the choice of the parents whether or not they want their students wearing a mask.
Dr. Oates, you need any form of a motion to your recommendation? No, this is under discussion.
Yes, under discussion and also it may have, may be premature. That would be my recommendation to you. I don't know why.
I'm fine with that. I just want it to be known that where we stand, so when we're given that authority, and I hope we are, and for the folks out there that agree with what we're saying, call your representatives and your senators and tell them to get on the horn and do their part to give us that authority.
When I talked to Representative Miller, who was formerly on the board, he did say that he is seeing that it may lean towards a parent or a local school board decision and then, you know, Mr. Lemon and I have talked about it, making it a parent decision. Whether you do or you don't, that's up to the parent and nobody should be, you know, spoken to if you do have one on and you shouldn't be spoken to if you don't have one on. It's a choice, it's a freedom of choice and that's what I hope falls in our laps.
We, it looks like we support that. Would it be in our interest to present a resolution to the?
I think it'd be more, we need, a resolution's fine, we need to request a local bill if we can't get a statewide bill, but the local bill doesn't require the Governor's signature.
Right.
So do both.
Yeah. And I've talked to Charlie about a local bill, but he was waiting to see like, you know, what Mr. Benton said.
So should we start with a resolution? They're all hesitant to do anything right now until that bill is officially, goes out of conference and it gets vetoed. And then there's going to be a mad scamper on who's going to get, what counties are going to get on that.
The local bill.
So I think we're probably best to just hold our horses, see what happens. I mean, for all we know, we could get a Supreme Court ruling or some kind of ruling from the state Supreme Court on it and we might get lucky and just self-solve.
I just think the more we sit on something, the more things could go wrong.
Yeah, be proactive, be proactive. I think we add layers where we can so that we can fight for our kids.
Dr. Oates, you have any other things for discussion?
I just want us to be aware, I think everyone is, of tropical storm that's out there. We have, of course, been updated and stay in contact with emergency services and National Weather Services and those parents who have students in our summer school right now, please pay close attention to the weather. We may be making some decisions in the next couple of days, so I just want everybody to be aware that that is on the horizon.
I think we'll know more tonight and in the morning. I think we could have an impact with Thursday.
Yes.
Hopefully not, but.
And I'm going to err on the side of caution either way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But just back to where we were talking about, I will, sometime between the other day, I'll put together something, possibly a resolution we can do. I'm going to go ahead and move on.
I'll talk to Representative Miller too to see if we can't find out more about this.
I'll have something put together.
Yep.
Motion to go to closed session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Barbara, to go to closed session and Ms. Mopet, seconded. All in favor, say aye.